Good evening, we'll go ahead and begin our first meeting of the evening, our budget meeting. Can we do a roll call please Dana?
Bergman.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Siebel.
Here.
Smock.
Here.
Tonight we're gonna discuss our budget workshop for the fire department. Chief Ryan Phillips is here to answer any of your questions. I'll just kind of briefly go over just a couple things. You know, we take an average of the calls that were made from the previous year. As you can see ambulance calls is our, is the highest. Of course, that is also our revenue stream as well. Steve was questioning what the revenue stream was for ambulance calls last year, and we believe it was around somewhere around two hundred and twenty-five thousand. A lot of the things are similar, but they've only increased because the budget class I went to, gosh, has it been a couple of weeks ago already? Couple of weeks ago said the Iowa CPI right now is eight point one percent. So that is probably the highest it's been in many, many years. So that's why you're seeing some of the increases in gas on the budget. Vehicle operational equipment, Mid-American utility, I mean, that was, that was a big one. Phone and internet. Another one too I want to address before I give it to Brian is data processing went up, wasn't it three thousand Ryan? For ESL? Is it ESL?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it went up three thousand. It hadn't went up since we started that program.
Because of volume of calls? Didn't we go into the next price bracket or something like that?
Yeah, too many calls, yeah.
Yep.
So I guess that's a...
So out of our control unfortunately.
Yeah. So Ryan, you guys have any questions for Ryan for this evening? Or Ryan, do you have any questions for the council?
Not yet.
The thing I got is overtime, is that paid to the EMT or what is that?
That is paid. And this is something we're gonna talk to you about this evening. Currently Rob works twelve hour days. So he comes in at five o'clock every morning. He does not start his shift until eight o'clock. So, so his actual shift is eight to five. So if he goes out on a call, we have to pay him, or he can get comp time either way. We have to pay him for that overtime. If he goes out on a call from five AM till eight AM, then we have to pay him for that call. Or multiple calls, depends. What happens some days?
Mayor, why does he come in at five? Maybe you're gonna tell me scheduling, but if he's eight to five, why isn't he just coming in prior to eight and being eight to five paramedic? Which I have no issue with unless there's... This gets back to me and a dirty taste of Brian used to come down here at five o'clock in the morning and not get out doing things till seven, eight o'clock in the morning. I don't really have a big overall conversation about the fire budget tonight. I'd just like to know why that's going on. I didn't know that till you told me and I appreciate you telling me that.
Well, it's always been ever since the position was set up. However, that being said, we, we have been fortunate in having local people. It's, you know, so basically they're just on call from five to eight. He's on call from five to eight, but he's coming from Fairbank. There's no way he's gonna make a call from Fairbank if the paycheck goes off.
So we don't have any paramedic coverage? Well, I don't think we have.
And I'm gonna let you address that.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Why it was set up that way initially.
Coverage, he's like you said, on call from five to eight in the morning. If he gets a call, then he gets comp time, overtime, whatever he chooses. And if he stays after the same, past five o'clock staying in bed too, he gets called towards the end of the day. So between five and eight, he comes here and sits. If there's no calls, he gets absolutely nothing for it.
Okay, so there's no, are there days he comes in five to eight with no pay? Or is there a regular thing of getting paid?
There's several.
No, no pay. There's no calls, there's no pay.
But he's working twelve hours basically?
He's, he's here from five to five. On call is this kind of gray area. Like you said, it was originally designed for ten, eleven, or whatever it was. People lived in town at that time. Now, so if they get a call, they can stay home till eight o'clock, get ready for the day. But if they get a call, they'd have to respond. But he's here actually.
What does he think about not being? I guess my question thinking of an employee is if he's coming in, hey, that's great, I really appreciate that. But if he knows, I don't know the breakdown while looking at the records, but let's say half the time he knows he comes in and he's not gonna be paid probably, the records would show that, and half the time he may. What does he think about that as an employee?
He's kinda questioned it a handful of different times of...
Do we have a, do we have a real issue that five to eight AM, we need him here on call or here period?
Yeah, lots of times people heading to work, getting off work. This is kinda, just as I testified too, it's kind of a gray area of a bad transition time.
So he, how long has he been with us?
Two and a half, about two and a half years maybe. Three years, three years in March.
He's been at Fairbank the whole time you knew that?
Born and raised.
Yeah.
The position was wrote, the position, the hiring document was wrote specifically to call out. You were on call.
Okay, so he knew it when he did the job?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we, I don't know if you wanna address this or you want me to?
You can start.
Okay, so we have been thinking about it though, there is things that he needs to do. He needs to do before his position starts. So we were thinking about adding one hour to that day. So he'd still have the two hours that are, you know, he'd still have to be here. But then he'd have an hour from seven o'clock AM till eight o'clock, like he takes...
If I be, not to interrupt, if I be from five to six right away.
Oh, five to six right away, okay.
Extra stuff he's talking about.
Okay.
There's stuff, normally ambulance service, they come in, first thing they do is they check your eggs, you do, make sure you're good to go for the day. He don't do that till, he can't do that till eight. There's stuff, he goes out, he can, he takes them out once or twice a week, he'll take them out, drive them around, you know, just check transmission fluid and check the lights and overall supplies and stuff, monitors and...
He could still do that now though, right? Cause he's not on call.
Five to eight?
Yeah, well...
If he does, you gotta pay him.
Well, when he, I mean, at eight, he can go and do that.
Yeah, but three hours in the shift though, he gets calls in between there.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, he definitely can, yeah.
Yeah, but he's still just making it work.
I'm confused, he says he works from five to eight, five in the morning till eight in the morning?
He is on call, he can just be anywhere in the response area.
Yeah, but how long is he here, actual hours?
Till five at night.
Till five at night.
Twelve hours.
Five in the morning till five at night.
Okay, I'm thinking five to eight, and what's he...
Yeah, no, five in the morning till five at night.
So he's physically here twelve hours?
Yes.
But only getting paid for the...
Eight to five shift.
Eight to five shift.
Unless he has a call.
Unless he has a call. So then that's where the overtime comes in is that, that loo time between five to eight AM. Yes. I guess, I guess my question is, I'm trying to get at is, I really appreciate, and I would tell him that I appreciate he's put this thing in, but I, I have a little bit of a taste. I want him, I want him to be paid for when he comes to work. So I, I'm questioning why couldn't he come in eight to five or seven to five like Dan's talking? Maybe the one hour to do something before he's actually on the shift? I just don't, I never did like that idea of coming in. It seemed to me like a real gray area Ryan.
Oh, it is.
We're never gonna know unless I come up here and micromanage stuff and I'm not gonna. I mean, how much? Because I don't wanna ever have it come up and say the guy comes forward and says, well, I put in a hundred and twenty-six hours last year and I never got a dime. Well, then I would feel worth fault.
Well, I think he comes in because he accepted the job knowing that he had to do that and it's his personal preference to be here, otherwise he wouldn't have been working.
Has there ever commented you about it? Just discussed or questioning?
If we're gonna try and do this, we want to get him, get the vehicle up and running, checked for the day ahead of time rather than wait three hours into the shift.
Why can't he come in seven and do all that pre-deal and then he's on duty in the ambulance? And somebody else would have to cover the five to seven?
Who's gonna do that?
Why?
We are short. I mean, I said that's a bad time to go to work, five, six, seven, eight o'clock in the morning. It's typically all taking an hour, hour and a half probably, Justin, right, somewhere in that?
I don't see a problem with it as long as he does, he charges for the time cause then he's being paid for the time he's working. And the other time, just like if you wanna go in and work two hours early at work, it's up to you. I guess I'm an employer, so if somebody wants to come in and work an extra two hours, let them go.
So I mean, to give you the scenario where this is how it was designed, most of us know JT Pija, right? Was a former medic for the fire department, so at least didn't hurt him or anything. Was a full-time for us for a while. He lives, well, when he's not on the road trucking. His residence where he receives mail is still down by the Amets. This was designed for somebody like that. He's in town to where you're home from five and you don't have to report until eight like a normal nine hour, you know, eight hour workday, nine hour shift. But that three, first three hours is if there is a call, you need to be able to respond like what our volunteers do. And since he's salaried or whatever it is for a call, he would get paid for that. The difference with what, and this hasn't been the only one we've done this with, and it does result in burnout, cause it's a twelve hour day, it's five days a week, especially when you ain't getting paid for it potentially. Then you take it from out of town. The stipulation was to rob upfront. He knew about it. But yes, I agree, it's great to take the job, but a year or two in, okay, is it still worth it? Type of thing.
What's the dollar now we're talking?
Well, if we added one hour, and, and Ryan and Rob and I have discussed that, and if we added one hour, it'd be about sixty-one hundred.
And that's including?
A year.
That's including the three percent raise too in July.
Yeah, yeah.
So not quite the whole six thousand.
Right, right, exactly.
But you were just talking about actually making it two hours though?
Just one.
Still one?
Just one, yeah.
Okay.
He was satisfied, he'd think he gets...
He would, he would still come in from five to five.
With the actual pay hours?
But he would have one hour, you know, so he would, he would get paid for nine hours instead of eight.
So he's full-time, so does he, like if he goes over forty hours, is he, is that a one hour overtime day?
That was my next question.
If he, if he does before, after the shift?
I think we, and I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get clarification from our city attorney because he is salaried.
Yeah.
But we were always told by Laura, our former city attorney, that if he went out, we had to pay him.
Which is acceptable because he's pulling out before shift.
Right.
What does he do is...
But that's a good question Christie.
Yeah.
Because is that gonna get into a overtime situation?
Well, then you need to start like...
Working nine hour days.
So explain to me, like the part-time EMT, it's like we have one? And I'm so sorry, I do not know much about.
No.
That's alright, that's alright.
So the part-time is for vacation.
Oh.
Cause he gets vacation, holidays.
Okay.
And he doesn't even take his vacation. He's really bad about it.
He can't talk me into it.
Okay, so what is?
I know.
What is his required Monday through Friday by five?
Yep.
Okay. And so then if he's not available by five, then our volunteers just do it, right?
Yeah, so the rest of the schedule's covered.
Yeah, they book it in advance and...
Our contract for him, if there is one, states that he has to work five, or he has to work eight to five, but he has to be available five to eight.
That's correct.
Do you have a time clock or you...
We don't have a time clock, but he's there every morning cause I see him. He goes by my house every day.
He's gotta present on time stuff anyway, don't he?
Yes.
Yeah, just like everybody else.
Just like everybody else, yeah.
I, I guess Ryan, my, my feeling on that, not trying to be argumentative at all, but I, I'd like to get this clarified. I mean, if the guy's gonna come in, I don't wanna have any gray sky where nobody's really knowing, did he come in and not have to do nothing for three hours? Did he come in and one hour and be paid? It sounds like a lot of tic-tac-toe for tracking. I, I would like a little more for his benefit, not, not city, well, private city too, because I hate to have him ever come back at some point and they, unless he signs an affidavit to that kind of agreement that he's willing and gonna do that. I think we'd have difficulty if he ever was disgruntled, don't you Dan?
I don't think there would be a problem as far as so. As long as he didn't do nothing pretending to his job.
Yeah.
Once you do something, think your job, then you gotta pay him. But if you want, same way of you, if you're working, if my employees, they wanna come in two hours early and sit in there, but I don't care.
Plus he, he knows he, I mean, he signed a contract knowing that that's what he had to do. He had to be available and be within probably what, ten, fifteen minutes of...
Five.
I'm sorry.
When's the town one?
I'm trying.
Yeah, you're good, city limits.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, he has to do it, otherwise he couldn't be doing his full-time job.
And if he goes on a call, he should punch the clock if, so he got a record of it.
Yep, and there is.
He does, he does, yep.
Dispatch keeps track of times when we're calling.
Yeah, we got, we got every hour that he works. Yep.
So I just have a question too. So the current budget for this year is what?
Two thirty-eight, two eighty-two.
All right, and, and so the actual is fifty-eight, so we've only spent fifty-eight this year?
This is the first quarter. This is just, this is just August through September.
Sorry, all right, so you're asking for, for twenty twenty-two, twenty...
FY twenty-four.
Yeah, it's two fifty-two, so we're only going up that amount of difference, right?
Right, and included in that, I don't know if you noticed the safety clothing. One thing that Ryan had talked about is, is it every five years Ryan? You have to replace your?
Ten.
Okay, every ten years. And you said that's been five years already?
I think we're hitting six now.
Okay, so we're already at six years on their, their fire gear? So if we start putting away ten thousand a year, we'll be able to afford, you know, we'll be able to afford it when it comes due in another four years.
Is the gear all on one cycle or is it stacked in cycles?
It is kinda staggered. We can't go buy a bunch of gear we don't need right now due to sizing, otherwise we're gonna be eating on gear. Yeah, it's kinda, we try to scrub out some, but...
Last major purchase was grants helped or assisted.
Yeah.
So that's, I hate to say it, but the easy way I think of it in my head is it's on a grant cycle.
Right.
So we basically apply for it when we're really in need, and then it's up when we can get a grant. Cause it's, yeah, kind of an all at once thing.
Yeah.
And it's all turn out here.
Yeah.
Yep, helmets to the boots.
Yeah, a few bits, a little bit.
Well, and the last, the last grant we got was from, was from Blackhawk Gaming, but that's not, it's...
Not a guarantee.
No, it's not a guarantee and it's not really in their window of things they like to give grants for anymore. Cause they feel that, you know, the city, since that is a required, that's a requirement, that the city should be paying that out of their budget.
Well, I think that with like increasing it by an hour, I think we probably need to find out if we're gonna run into overtime issues.
Yeah, I definitely will.
And then we can probably revisit it, I think.
Yep, I think, I agree.
And we would have a Monday through Friday, after this day you do this, this and the, you know.
He'd have a checklist that go through.
One that he would have to keep track of and be checked on so...
If he's sitting there, I bet you he thinks of all of it, he could be doing it while he's sitting there.
Yeah.
Three hours, he has a lot of time to, I think once...
If he doesn't take vacations, then he's probably...
What do you do, what do we do with him? He doesn't take vacation, he's...
He loses it.
He loses it?
Okay, that part of it.
But he's been warned, I mean, several times, I mean...
Ryan's age, we gotta pay somebody to come and work for him.
Ryan's kicked him out a couple times.
Yeah.
In a positive way.
Yeah, we have people like that too, you know, who just don't wanna do that.
He's mad he has to go take holidays off.
I was gonna say, yeah, the holiday was the last fight.
Thanksgiving, Christmas kills him every year.
Is he young?
I would say yes, low fifties probably, you know.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
He just really loves his job.
Yeah.
He's, he's all in.
That's a baby.
Yeah, you're right.
Young man. He come from EMS ward where they worked every day and any day and different hours all the time, so. And this is a different position, Monday through Friday and holidays off, different than what either of yous do, so.
Twelve to twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any information we can get? I've always been curious as when our, I don't wanna get too deep in this. But when our call, he's a stationary if it's Monday through Friday. When our call, I know they're gonna be radical, I know you're gonna tell me that cause you can't predict everything. But you probably have a tracking, the hour quadrants, when most things usually happen and when they don't happen.
I can tell you exactly how many calls there is, any hour of the day, any day of the week.
Can you get something like that for me to look at?
What, what do you want to know?
I just would like to know how many calls that he's, on his shift, that he's here obtaining? Or do we have a lot of shift calls when he's not here because of his stationary hours, eight to five, that you guys are picking that up or somebody's picking that up?
I'm not sure the answer to your question. He averages about forty percent of the calls.
Forty percent.
Overall, yeah.
Okay.
Two to twenty-four hour shift. As of, I am not sure how many in between five and eight, but overall it's, let's see here.
We're on pace for a record year this year too?
Yeah, we're already, we're already more calls now than we had, they all in last year, or any other year, I guess.
Well, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I kinda, I'd like to have another thing on that pay deal. And when I looked at, the only thing I really did look down here was the clothing and you already brought it up about a grant. If we're gonna plug something every year and I see seventy-five hundred, we've only used twenty-three hundred, why can't we leave that line at the seventy-five hundred? It doesn't look like it's gonna strap anybody. I'm just looking at a few dollars.
Well, six years ago it cost us forty-two thousand was our share.
Right, but we'd be budgeting this seventy-five hundred every year. So if you take three, four years, your thirty thousand dollars there we'd have before he would say he wants to buy...
But there is stuff that you need throughout the year. I mean, obviously we...
Well, you'd have seventy-five hundred a year.
I could spend it if you want me to.
Well, I'm ready to do that, ready to go through.
And it's probably that too, gear's way far behind getting manufactured. We ordered some, what was that insurance claim, like February maybe this year?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get the pants we ordered in April next year. So just cause we order now, don't mean we'll get billed for it till, never buy a couple of mighty gears for too long, but...
And that, and again, I wanna, I wanna say with everything going up like it has been, I don't know what the future holds as far as that goes, but we're not gonna be able to buy the same gear for the forty-two thousand we did six years ago. It's gonna be fifty thousand or it's gonna be sixty thousand.
So I guess Mayor, what I'm asking you then, okay, why can't Ryan attempt to try for a grant again? Means we're talking this language and it is safety related and see what happens this year. Maybe we might get some money on top of what we wanna budget, and then we're not strapping the budget as much to succeed what he needs.
And we're not doing anything with this money. We're simply putting this ten thousand in reserves.
But it's still money in their budget to spend.
It is, it will know.
If I apply for a grant, I gotta know exactly how much I'm gonna spend.
Yeah, and you can't apply for a grant till you're ready to buy it.
There's maybe only two, three people needing gear right now at best. I, I hate to apply for a grant for five thousand when I could use a lot bigger amount down the road.
For another purchase.
Yeah, for more different, more bigger purchase of clothing at that point in time. It, it's hard to justify, hey, we got a couple of those are outdated or don't have stuff to fit them or as opposed to wait till for a couple more years, we got a dozen people that need it, you know?
Yeah.
I liked the other thing at one time, but not knowing who's gonna be here.
Yeah.
I'll still be here Ryan.
I know you will. I wasn't talking about you.
My gear's in good shape Steve, don't worry.
Good, I like to hear that pie in somewhere. I like hearing that.
He takes care of his stuff.
Well, I guess if we're gonna tentatively let it go at this and just wait for that, that call on the... I don't like that hour discretion thing with him down there. We never, what I'm struggling with Ryan is it's never come up before as far as I know. Now we must be wanting to appease him in some fashion because he's telling you that he's occasionally wanting to or needing to do something prior to eight itself.
He's wanting to get those vehicles checked and ready for the day before.
So it's just that much idle time is?
Yeah.
Didn't they have a gal down there years ago that stayed there and slept there?
Temper, right. That one, our last one did for a little bit, then there was one before, she, I'm not sure where she's come from, like Central City or something, she did for a little while.
She come in at six o'clock?
But there's no sleeping quarters there now either. That was in the basement.
Been on the middle level now, so.
I think I can see...
You're still advanced though.
Mm-hmm. Still an advanced provider.
I can see where like what I think Steve is trying to say is like, how many calls does he have? And I don't wanna like, I'm not saying that this isn't a thing that can't happen. I'm just saying how many calls does he have at eight o'clock? But he can't get the vehicles ready from eight to nine? And then, yeah, you know, like there might be a call out, but it's probably not like every single day maybe? I don't know because I don't know.
Come back a week maybe on this call?
Yeah, yeah.
And couldn't you Ryan, I get nothing to butt in, but couldn't your guys just throwing things out there? I know you guys are down there a lot, I don't know, couldn't somebody pull the hood and check the fluids and check the oil and everything when you're in and out of there all the time? And not have to rely on him being dedicated for an hour every day?
I could see why they would do it full-time.
Justin, do you want to put more time down on checking stuff that he should be doing?
Steve also, we do it twice a month. So it is part, we do truck checks, it's part of our standard...
Twice a month?
Twice a month, the entire...
Well, we do, we do him once and fire truck once.
Yes, yep, but the regular stuff. And it, I'm gonna take my nice hat off for just a second. It is amazing at how just a single day or even two days of a weekend can go by and even our great, highly educated and dedicated people can't count. And you get back in a call and all of a sudden you were out of something that you simply, if you use it, put it back.
Right.
And that still doesn't happen. So the ability to check daily is something that all full-time departments do. Now, it's not necessarily a full check, but there is a full check once a week and then mini checks through the rest.
Like the images and all that stuff?
Yep, just all the regular things rotated.
Tire pressure.
Yep, all the piece. I do know from time riding with Waterloo, and I doubt they've changed this, their medics, unless they are actively back-to-back running calls, the moment they walk in that door, you know, at seven fifty-nine as they're doing shift change, and I think they have to be there even before that for their medics to go over, within the first hour, must not be started, must be completed within their first hour.
Yeah.
So if they had stuff left over from last shift, if they were transferring cause they're pulling a forty-eight or whatever, they have one hour to get it completed. And that's not to say that they had a call in there, because if they had a call in there and it was that last half hour and they procrastinated, depending on who the battalion chief is, he'll be right down there going, why is your trucks not getting done? And that happens every single day.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think it would be important to make sure you get those checks in. Um, did this, did the, am I reading this right, the budget like decreased?
No.
No, it had a grant.
It went from two thirty-eight two to two fifty-two seven.
Yeah, but like in, like I guess the times?
The previous years.
Yeah, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, but if you look at this, if you look at FY twenty-one, that's when we have bought all that SCBA gear. We got a FEMA grant, so we still had to budget it. We spent a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred on that, that year.
Okay, that's why that's up.
Yep.
I, I can see where Steve's coming for the safety clothing and especially something that I am very familiar with. I would, looking at this and hearing Steve and Christie's side as well, I could see taking that twenty-five hundred, especially for this first year, and moving that over trying to fulfill this extra hour for Rob. I know you were estimating sixty-one hundred, but that would be twenty-five of it, for example.
So you're saying the yearly seventy-five hundred and move that twenty-five hundred in salaries if we chose to do that?
If, as, as a leverage so that we're not increasing two line items.
Okay, so the twenty-five hundred was just the first quarter of this year. What was actually budgeted this current budget was seventy-five hundred.
Correct, and we're increasing a proposed ten thousand of an increase of twenty-five hundred.
So the difference is twenty-five hundred moving over.
To kinda help split the difference to say, okay, instead of, to try to figure out Rob's issue, our paramedic issue, I, I could see and go along with Steve on that to say, okay, we need to stay at seventy-five hundred, we need to keep budgeting. But if I look at it, say, gear's a ten year life cycle, we'll take, I'll even go high at thirty members. I wish we can get back to thirty members and say thirty members need gear at, and this is low, a thousand dollars. We need three hundred thousand dollars over the course of ten years. So, exactly.
It's twenty-five hundred dollars a set right now. That was when we bought it last year.
Plus hell and boots and.
So even if we're at, we need that level and amount over ten years, there's how you can distribute that appropriately. The first year, I understand we're at seventy-five hundred. We need to continue to increase little by little. But we also are looking to increase hopefully something we don't have to do this every year with the full time, if that makes sense.
That makes sense, but I'd still like legal opinion on that.
Yeah, yes, I'm just saying from dollar cents wise, if that's what we're trying to get to, I could see taking the twenty-five hundred from that line item and helping it offset our potential sixty-one hundred proposed increase for that to help soften it a little bit.
This year only because we still need a.
Yeah.
We still need to pad the safety budget.
And that's something that we've talked about, just like, okay, when's the new ambulance coming up?
Yeah, we're.
Couple of years ago.
So, I mean, there's three hundred grand easy.
We got twenty years on our oldest ambulance, so.
And that's the kind of line item that a grant would be more lucrative to use.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah.
Is a, a full ambulance.
Yeah.
So just things like that in that capital purchase. The plan is, okay, we also need to start increasing our funding for safety equipment. We need a capital purchase of this apparatus. We need these types of things. I mean, it's gone so far as the association has continued to look to see what our team can do to start helping, um, for the nature trail projects and stuff, uh, new U T V. You know, so our team, there's some young and very ambitious people that would like to see those. We've challenged them and Chief as well has told them, go figure out the grant process. We'll point you in the right direction, but learn about it so that you know how to do this. And then also know how much work goes into it.
Yeah.
What's your income? For ambulance calls and stuff?
Um, last year we were somewhere around two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So you take two hundred and twenty-five thousand plus? Nope, never mind, I'm thinking PD, the elk run offset, we don't have fire.
Is that put in the part of this budget? Is it put back in?
Always. I mean, it's, well, it's, it's the general fund.
Yeah, a general fund.
And whole, yeah.
Cause back between the elk proposal and what the ambulance brought in, almost was, the ambulance was almost could be self, self-sustaining.
Run it on something else.
So, yeah, but just if you're looking numbers to numbers of where it could come is when we did fire as well with that proposal with the paramedic hire. I remember going through all that process. It was basically gonna be a wash. Just say, here's your operating budget between what we're getting from elk run and then the ambulance billings. That budget was pretty well covered by those items, so you can kinda see, okay, this isn't a, a shortfall or anything to the city. Even though it's a necessary provided service, we have to provide it, the fire, not EMS. But we dropped the ambulance, there goes your, you know, all the billings at two hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, there goes your revenue.
Yep, so it's not only a service I feel we want to provide, but it's also one that does help cover these costs.
So part of the elk run contract goes towards us too?
No, years ago when we bid on fire stuff, that's where I was confused because it's currently just police, sorry.
Yeah, so we don't go down there for fire? You'll help.
Mutual aid, yep, but no, nothing paid contract type stuff.
And that's, Mary, the figure you've got in here, uh, the fifty-nine eighty-five, that is the raise in July?
Yeah, yeah, that's considering a three percent increase.
Well, I mean, we need a paramedic. I don't have a problem, but I just, this labor thing, I was literally that with Mr. Wertz. And I, I just don't wanna get into a thing where we're fighting, let's make a deal, who keeps track of what, when does he work, when he don't work? How many hours did he put in last quarter? I mean, I mean, it should be pretty clear cut, we're either gonna do a set thing and we're gonna know, or we're not gonna do it. And if he's, I mean, I know he took the job on like Christie says, and he doesn't seem to have a problem with it. But I'd like to get it clarified out to have a little more dialogue before I would agree to that myself, but there's five people. Other than that, I didn't notice anything else.
What is his official pay? Rate, not rate, the pay, is he salaried or?
He is, he's salaried, but it was, I do have in his personnel file where, where Laura Falkert's our previous city attorney stated that if he went out on a call before eight, then he had to be paid a stipend or get comp time for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But officially that position is a salaried position?
Right.
Okay.
So he might be okay with that.
And I'm gonna get clarification on that too, because, you know, generally speaking on a salaried position, um.
There isn't overtime on salary.
If it's.
That is correct. The only thing I can think of is because it's outside of his hours, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's outside of the forty hours per week. So, but that was a good point that Christie brought up and we'll definitely check into that.
I don't like it, like my place, you can, if you're salaried, you know, I could go in for five minutes and be paid for a full day, you know? So I don't know, you know, how it works at every establishment.
Right.
And you can, you know, but you don't get paid overtime if you work twelve hours or ten hours or fifteen hours.
Right.
So you said, oh, yeah, overtime would be like a contract hour. You know, if, if we're adjusting it by an hour, can we do it under like a contracted type thing in addition to a salary, you know?
I'm gonna check all the avenues of that. I will.
See, I'm salaried, but I get paid whether I show up or not.
I think you own your own business, so.
There's a difference.
There's a big difference.
I was just gonna say, I could echo Christie, like, yeah, I can show up for five minutes and get paid this and that, and typically it's the other way. It's the, all of a sudden they'll.
That's how you reverse remain.
A forty hour week seems like a cakewalk anymore. Like, oh, this was forty hours? Wow, I have so much extra time left.
So, uh, Justin, a question I have for you, being you just mentioned it, you've got these young stallions, they got a lot of willingness. Are you working with them to start in this grant process for an ambulance now, fundamentals, where they know where to go, how to go and when to go? So we can see what the future holds on that topic?
That's like looking into, not to interrupt, but that was like looking into a crystal ball, because you're, you can't apply for a grant until you're ready. I mean, we can apply for a grant now to be available fiscal year twenty-four, but not, you know, we're looking at three years, probably three to five years on replacing that ambulance, right?
And last we checked, it was like a two year wait to get one.
Yep.
So, you know, unfortunately, like with Blackhawk Gaming especially, you know, they're, it's only good for one year. So you can't do it too far in advance.
That's what I heard on his phone.
Now, to answer your question, Steve, as far as the, the rest of the association and stuff on what they wanted, nothing formal has started as far as applications or anything, but more just researching what is all out there. Those members elected to start looking into what was available for the U T V.
Cause I seen on TV the other night something, there was a fire department around here.
Independence?
Somewhere got a, got a fire truck or an ambulance through a grant of some sort. It wasn't gaming, I don't think, but it was some other.
U S D A World Development.
There you go, there you go.
Independence just got their new U T V, which was the one we were looking at, so we had a good kinda source for us.
This is the fire truck or ambulance that they got. Plus they got money to build a new station.
What town was that? They were just done the news that day.
But that, it's gotta be available because somebody's already gotten it.
Do you wanna set up here?
The big, at least from my history.
City attorney plaque, I really wasn't.
Chief may have more recent experience, but I do know even years ago, and we're talking probably eight years ago or better, the big, big grants that are just like, hey, we're gonna fund eighty percent of your, you know, half million dollar purchase are just, we get discredited and eliminated from those pools first round every time. Because, it's a double edged sword. Because, my wording, the city takes good care of their departments. We're able to do it, as were all of these other cities that don't have any funding or anything and are rocking fifty year old equipment. That's where they wanna bring in the grants, so it's a double edged sword. They come in and say, oh, Evansdale's doing a great job keeping up. While Podunk Iowa over here is still doing horse and buggy, we're gonna give our grant to them. So it's, the big ones like that, we fell out of instantly. I mean, didn't even make it past anywhere close to the first round.
Especially on the vehicles, with the last one, we got through all the gear, what was the average truck, fifty or sixty years old before they replace it?
Yeah.
That's FEMA, yeah, that's.
And as soon as it was going for the FEMA grant for New England, we started watching the presentation on it and we thought, we better find something else that we need.
Right.
Scratch the whole idea. That was six years ago, we're still.
Good discussion.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what you gotta have up front, find out where we're going.
I think it's fine, it needs about overall about six percent increase from last year. And it's, I mean, we have an income base for the ambulance, so I mean, I think we have to come up with what, like twenty-five thousand?
I did the same thing you did, is I'm like, okay, inflation's pushing nine.
Yeah.
Are we seeing a nine percent? Hey, we're blowing that. That's a win. That's even for a start, that's a win.
Yeah, we gotta be careful though, cause we're gonna end up hitting some.
Well, just fuel costs, we blow another leaf spring that costs us, you know, twenty-five hundred bucks or whatever, which I, I don't know how, I'm not a grease monkey by any means, so I don't know how else you could have caught that per se as far as what maintenance or something would have caught it. It just decided to go and we were down without a truck. I mean, it complete for two weeks. Yeah, and that's a long, long time.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there's one that happened, you know, that's one that.
Mm-hmm, oh yeah.
Enough said tonight. Have a great day.
They can't give us nice things. Tell them all that time.
I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?